Nine o'clock.
Billy, you want to leave it to this or?
I'd like to leave this. South America. Consider it one nation under one law with liberty and of all.
Didn't beat us.
No, I didn't. Okay, everybody had a chance to look at the agenda and we need a motion to approve the agenda. Any additions or deletions?
I'm good with roll call first.
Oh.
Do you want to do?
Get me squared away.
We're doing what the approval word does at the same time.
Oh.
Right at the end of the sentence right here. Okay. Roll call please.
Johnny David. Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes. The move that we approved the agenda.
I need a second. Do I say have a second on the agenda?
I'll, a second on approval of the agenda.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Watching best. Do we have any public comment? On agenda items only? Any comment from? The audience? No comments? Appointments? Ryan Veder?
And Planning and Zoning Administrator. Text Amendment.
All right, morning. Got one text amendment for you in two parts. At our last planning commission meeting, the planning commission approved the text amendment to add slaughterhouses as a special use in agricultural rural preservation district. Basically, planning commission deemed that kind of is an agricultural use. So, you know, currently, the only place that existed in our ordinance was as a special use in our industrial districts. And then as part of that approval, they also added a couple of specific special use for that, for that use, particularly minimum acreage of five acres. Must meet all applicable, applicable laws that apply to that. So we were talking USDA and probably some other laws there as well. And also no structures that are part of the processing facility will be closer than a hundred feet to any property line too. So just to kind of give a little bit of separation there. But we currently have an applicant that is looking at creating a new USDA approved slaughterhouse here in Ogden County, which which if you talk to a lot of people who do their process meat or have any process, it is something that we very well could use here in Ogden County. I think the closest USDA inspector is or USDA approved facility is actually Ebel's in Falmouth, so.
Ryan, do you have any idea what township that would be in?
Hogan Township. The vicinity is going to be the vicinity that he's looking at is David and M fifty-five roads in that area. So north side of M fifty-five.
I had a question.
David, David and fifty-five.
David and fifty-five, yeah. I think that's Logan.
Snaken.
I'm pretty sure it is.
Logan, yeah, I think so.
That's still west of Henderson Lake Road. So it would now be east of Henderson Lake Road. David Road?
Yeah. It's David and then isn't it Beach?
Gillings, Gillings, Gillings is first road.
Billy, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure I think majority of the property they have is in Logan Township. So I'm pretty sure it is Logan Township.
I'll go with that though. Well, they got a property in both.
So you said a slaughterhouses. Are we talking like a pretty big facility that's going to employ a number of people or is this kind of just a small little family?
More of a small, smaller. The applicant was talking, you know, less than twenty. Probably a day would be processed. Wouldn't quite be quite the process that they have to go through. In fact, they've been told at the meeting that they actually have to have an office and a bathroom in the facility specifically for the USDA inspector. So every animal that's killed or processed has to be, or I guess the killing process has to be inspected by an inspector, USDA inspector. So so no, we're not talking about a big, huge meatpacking facility. That is probably something that would be more useful in an industrial zone. But on a small scale, some of it is better for the animals, better for, for the product as well too. I'm sure he probably wouldn't, wouldn't mind if he was doing more than, more than twenty. But currently, I think he's trying to keep it, keep it kind of looking to probably cater to more local and trying to bring people from all.
Yeah. It'll be right on the highway.
He'll be just off M fifty-five.
Yeah, I think we should have this on the agenda for next week.
Yep, I agree.
I agree.
I'll send some resolutions to Tim.
Anything else that you want to talk about? I mean, we got text amendments and all kinds of special use.
So we are talking, we are looking a little bit in the planning commission about renewable energy. We are discussing solar and wind energy. There are a few groups or companies, individuals, three to four right now that are looking at areas in Ogden County for solar farms and or windmills.
In Ogden County?
In Ogden County, not only in our zoning districts, but also in West Branch Township as well too. The biggest issue we're having on the solar side is our ordinance currently does not allow solar farms in the agricultural district. And it's kind of been a point of contention and something we've been discussing. Obviously, they look for, excuse me, the solar farms look for lands that are relatively flat and clear, which is a lot of farmland. So we are discussing and looking at different ideas and things to do. Obviously, we want to protect our, our farmable land. However, we do want to be cognizant of the owner's, the owner's ability to make money on their land as well too. So and when we talk about solar power, we're not really talking about areas, the entire county really isn't open for it. They need to be in areas where they can connect to the grid pretty easily. Where you're looking like at the M thirty-three corridor, the M fifty-five corridor, and then there are some other areas too. So so we're looking at different versions and talking to different people. We had consumers in for a presentation at our last meeting. We've got another company out of Spain that is, that has a presentation as well too. And part of it's going to probably boil down to what we really want to see here in the county. I think you can probably talk to everybody and everybody would have a different opinion on what they'd rather see with solar or windmills. But it is, renewable energy is something that we need, not only as probably as a community, but as a state, but as a, as a nation as well too. So a lot of these farms will go to replace some of the coil, coal burning facilities or oil building, burning facilities as well too. So the state has a goal of being sixty, I think it's sixty percent renewable energy by twenty thirty. That is a very lofty goal. But through the whole process, one of the things that we've been talking to consumers and other companies about is the, the amount of ag land here in Ogden County that would be utilized for solar farms or windmills is probably less than two percent of the actual farmable land we have here. So looking at trying to make it responsible, we do want to protect the farmers. We do want to protect that land. The nice thing about the solar farms is that they are at the lease, a generally twenty year lease. So an individual doesn't have to sell their property to profit off of it. It can be reverted back to farmland. There may be even some uses that can be done on the property at the same time as the solar panels as well. So so we're having those conversations. We're looking at other ordinances and then probably the next few months, we will be looking at, looking at something as far as language.
I had Tony turn those off.
What do you feel, Christian?
In fact, a lot of those presentations, I'll probably forward on to you folks.
Oh, you're not.
Want to make your leisure. A lot of really good information. It actually kind of helps explain the need that's out there for it. With everything wanting to be, we want to go electric with everything in this country. We're going to have to be able to provide that and put more stress on the, on the grid and everything as well too. So
Ryan, we passed a special use for one out there state road.
Oh yeah, a few years back and that was back when I first took over for Gwenda and yeah, they, they weren't listed as a special use in the ag districts. It's only listed as a special use in the business districts, B one, B two, B three, and the industrial district. Which the size of properties that we're looking at to do solar farms, I mean, you're generally looking ten, twenty, fifteen, thirty acres sometimes, or even more. We just don't have any zone parcels that are zone business or industrial that are really that big.
Right.
We might have a few, but it would be few, few and far between. So.
Right. It'll be fast, it stands anyway, doesn't it?
It's been two years since the approval and they haven't done anything with it. So that special use approval actually slipped away all during this way. So plus they needed to come back for state plan. Okay, I've never heard anything back.
Ryan, that was state and Henderson Lake area?
Yeah, so it would be east of. Oh, the, the ones we approved.
At forty acres that you were just talking about.
There was, back in twenty eighteen, it was state and yeah, I think it was just west of Henderson Lake Road. It was, I was in front of the deal farm.
Oh, deal farm.
And there was another one back through behind.
There's court upstairs and they asked. To stuff it up.
So yeah, it's, it's, it's a need. It's something Ogden County probably should be a part of. How we want to be a part of it, how much is to be determined. So but also generate some pretty pretty good taxable value for, for the county as well too.
Well, you need.
Speaking with Randy Booth yesterday, he says there are about a million dollars in acres.
But you need to address it at the time anyway. It's going to come.
Yep.
They're going to contact the property owner, property owner is going to come in, file papers. If you don't have something on the books.
A lot of these, a lot of these companies are signing leases with people under the understanding we don't offer solar farms on some of those properties as well too. And on their interest us to open that up to it as well too, but we, we want to be careful with that too. So they don't make more farmland. I think that's why I normally get pulled by the farmers. It's not like you go to Walmart and buy another thirty acres for your, for your land. So but we want to be careful with what we do have. And that actually is in our master plan is one of the biggest items. And the master plan is, you know, Ogden County is an agricultural community and we're, we should be protecting those agricultural uses too.
Yeah, but I want to comment. Twenty years ago, we had an expert present, give a presentation here about wind turbines. You know, Ogden County is not even conducive to wind turbines really. And I think there is an ordinance about where they can put them and it almost makes it impossible to put, put them here.
Yeah, one of the, one of the issues with one of the companies we're running into is since that word, it's been written since those, those folks came through and they'd signed a lot of leases with people. Wind energy like solar energy has, the technology has improved a lot. So they possibly might not need as much wind as they used to. Towers are actually getting taller as well too.
That's pretty exciting.
And so that's something to consider as well too. I will probably be putting some information out to the townships to kind of get their opinion on it as well too. Is it about fifty fifty? When you talk to people, would you rather see a, would you rather see a windmill or would you rather see a solar farm? So
Oh, but the the turbines are much more visible. You see them immediately from miles away.
I like the solar because if someone complains to me that they don't like to see them, I say, watch the road, don't watch the solar farm. Windmills are a little bit
Different.
They're a little bit harder to hide.
And can you use that property again, once they put those big?
There's a lot of cement that goes in the ground for those. So removing them is a bigger challenge. But that's built into both, in both of the ordinances is decommissioning of those bonds being put in place to make sure that those get removed when their, when their leases are up. So
So Ogden County is going for wind turbines and solar panels?
No, you're going for text amendments.
We're, we're looking correct. So solar, the windmills are actually are allowed in the agricultural rural preservation district. A lot of farmers I talked to prefer the windmills because they take up very small footprint. It's not taking up a lot of farmable land. They can also farm around them still. Solar farms are a little bit different. They're usually ten feet, fifteen feet off the ground. So producing crops underneath them is a little bit more difficult. But they're both, especially probably solar is advancing a lot faster from the technology level. The, the panels are just getting more efficient and lasting longer and things like that too.
So when the, so when it snows, then the snow would just melt off those panels. Is that correct?
Snow melts off the panel. There's very little reflection that comes off the panels. Downside of the windmills is you do have that shadow flicker that comes from, from windmills as well.
And the all the time too.
There is significant pros and cons to both of them. As far as a planning, planning standpoint. So.
I would want one in my backyard.
But it is a very good opportunity for individuals to make some significant, some significant money in leases. Currently, right now, solar firms lease for about a thousand dollars a year per acre. Wind, the windmills are about two thousand dollars a year per acre. So you're looking at an individual with fifty acres potentially be putting fifty thousand dollars in their pocket for a solar farm or a hundred thousand dollars in their pocket a year for a windmill. So over a twenty year span. So that money might might help some of them retire. I call it a 401K for some of these, for some of these individuals or a pension for some of these individuals.
And I think.
It also might have some of these, these farmers that might have some ag land that's not the best for crops that might provide them with an influx of income to actually keep them farming for another generation or two as well. So
Well, that was pretty much the story with the tower up there in Hill Township. That pretty much saved those peoples from losing the farm.
Yeah, yeah, the, the technology is, it's here. It's something that we need to have, especially when it comes to cell towers. Seems like we get more opposition to cell towers because of, because of their height and their, their visibility from, from, from far away. So I, I, I would, I would think that people would be more would rather see the solar farm than the windmills. But then again, I stopped trying to figure people out a long time ago. So.
Now, these wind turbines, do they just run on wind? They don't have to be started up with any gas engine or anything?
As far as I know, they don't. There may be, I'm not as familiar with the wind as I am with the solar. But they are generally very large producers of energy. In fact, I think consumers was saying, was it a forty or fifty acre solar farm? And maybe one or two windmills would be enough to power twenty to thirty thousand homes. So it's pretty significant what they can, what they can provide back to the grid. From, from both listening points. And those would be implemented all throughout the state. Consumers is looking at doing them through the state as well too. And that's obviously to get away from their dependency on coal and, and oil fired electricity production. So
And I'm not really excited about wind turbines. Because I know I wouldn't want one in my backyard.
It'd be a difficult.
And it does devalue your property considerably.
It is, it would be a difficult, it's you. They're not as easily hidden.
You can't hide them at all?
Right. You really can't hide them.
Not unless you put them in, in the, in where the redwoods are, where they're very tall.
The solar farm, let's say, went off fifty-five, that was an eighty acre solar farm traveling at fifty-five miles an hour, you would probably, it would probably be visible for ten seconds in your journey going back and forth.
I don't know much, much about the solar, but I do know quite a lot about wind turbines. I've done a lot of research on it. Had experts come up here and talk about it myself.
And I think it was back in oh seven, oh eight, we had
Yeah.
a lot come through here and
That was before I was even kind of commissioned.
I heard there was a lot of misinformation with that as well too. So as far as their ability to do it. Well, you know, you know, somebody's against something, they'll come up with any story they possibly can. I think we were told, I think, I think a lot of people were told a lot of these things and it wasn't the truth.
Yeah.
Or that.
Absolutely.
That they'd worked out a plan with consumers to buy this. And that wasn't the truth.
Yeah.
Consumers had never heard of them. So.
You know, it was just like the cell tower up there. You know, that's going to ruin our property values.
What cell tower?
Up in Hill Township, they, up near D's Lake, we approved the, approved the cell tower up there. Well, by government law here at the county, we can't, we don't have much choice in the matter. But that's gonna, what's the first thing that everybody wants to, wants to know about the property they're going to buy up here? Do I have internet?
Oh, yeah.
Everybody wants to know it. So that cell tower is going to provide internet up in the end of the county that doesn't have any. So but there, but the argument they come in with is you're going to lower my property values. No, soon as you get internet, you're probably, you're probably worth twenty grand more. You know? More and more, you know?
Yeah, this is, there, there's a big push by not only the state of Michigan, but also I'm sure the, the federal government for renewable energy as well too. Oh, yeah. So it is, it's coming.
So you got to have rules in place for it.
So it, it, it is something that we have to consider and, and allow for those uses. Legally, we have to allow for, for pretty much every use somewhere in the county. So, so we'll be looking at that a little bit closer, probably having a few meetings on it. I'm sure it will be well. It'll be well attended. Sure, we'll get comments from a lot of people as well too.
All right, thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff Gilbert. I thought the grant for the snowmobiles.
Morning.
Morning.
Just a simple thing here is that our office applied for a grant and was awarded twenty-five thousand dollars. And that grant will be used to buy a snowmobile and a snowmobile trailer enclosed to, to just basically support, you know, put them sleds in there and secure them. So we, we just need an approval on that. Be back.
Yeah.
Remember last year, we were talking about getting an extra sled while this came through perfectly. So
Perfect.
Now we had to get two guys out there and save it for everybody.
We can get, well, we don't have to spend the grant money on a snowmobile.
Yeah.
We can spend it on hours instead. Right?
Well, no, we, it's, it's, doesn't, doesn't.
No, 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 not from this. But I mean, if we took the other grant money, the DNR grant money and spent that on a snowmobile, then we can't spend it on hours to drive it.
Right, exactly.
This, we can now concentrate the grant dollars. No, Paul?
We saw a bill granted for purchase of a snowmobile, above and beyond the actual grant operating.
Oh, what is he?
Yeah.
Can we, can we use the basic grant to buy a snowmobile? The basic.
They submitted in the past for them and it's never, hasn't been approved.
Okay.
So they're a little stingy when it comes to equipment.
Okay, okay. No, this is, this is great.
This is what we're good for.
This is, this is fantastic.
Anyway. Chris Betters out there, he's searching all the time for grants and very successful with it. So.
I'd like to hear if I need that. Just clarify a couple of things in the reports that are asked. No.
No.
It's the second page of, of, they're asking for reports, which is very common for these type of, type of grants. I'll point out the grant dollars will be distributed in December of twenty-three. So this year, sheriff will be able to use those grant monies for this season. However, the reporting requirements, they want to see our fiscal year twenty-three audited financial report by December second of twenty-four. That's no problem meeting that deadline. But the dollars are going to be received in fiscal year twenty-four. And that audit report will be available until, it will be available before March thirty-first of twenty-five. So let's clarify which audit they want to see. If they want to see an audit that doesn't include this grant, that's fine, we can provide it. But I think they really want the, the fiscal year twenty-four audit, which will be a year out from the due date that they've got listed in.
They're probably thinking more on a calendar.
Okay. Budget. They, they probably do. But yeah, we just want to make sure that we clarify that. So there aren't any surprises.
We'll work on it.
I'm, I'm sure it's just a matter of changing the date on the report and they'll be fine.
Okay. We'll get on that.
Anything else?
Let's, yeah, let's put approval of the grant on the
Okay.
Next week's meeting.
Yep. Good, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Any others? News?
Dear treasure.
I'll give you an update next week.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Good morning, Karen Picklowski, you're Ogden County Treasurer. At a PLSB meeting that you held in June, there were statements made regarding staff reductions to the treasurer's office. As a co-employer, and let me say that again, a co-employer, this is my signature on your union contract. I'm a co-employer of the staff in my office. I'm here today to discuss a few facts relating to the statutory duties of a county treasurer's office that you might not be aware of. The impact a staff reduction would have on the service provided to the public and request that you leave the office staff as is. The treasurer's office has many statutory requirements under the Michigan compiled laws, which include, but are not limited to, several accounting functions such as receipting of all county funds, bank reconciliations, investment of idle funds, being the agent of the delinquent tax revolving fund, drain district funds, and that's just to name a few. There are countless other requirements of the county treasurer's office, which cannot be minimized or diminished when creating a county controller position. County government is an arm of the state government and as such, the county treasurer's office must carry out said duties as set forth by the state of Michigan. The county treasurer must receipt an account for all monies belonging to the county under MCL forty-eight forty. The county treasurer must keep books for all bank accounts and depositories under MCL one twenty-nine and in accordance with public act twenty. The county treasurer is the sole agent of the delinquent tax revolving fund under MCL two eleven eighty-seven. There's an extensive list of required statutory duties outlined by the state of Michigan for the county treasurer's office. In fact, under the general property tax act, those statutes add up to two hundred and three pages. That's a lot of statutes. Now I can bore you with all of those statutory duties today. But MCL two eleven seventy-eight is relevant to the use of the tax reversion fund. That is a restricted fund that cannot be used for any other department or any other service. The current budget lists a transfer from the tax reversion fund to the general fund of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. The staff wages for the county treasurer's office this year is one hundred seven thousand four hundred fifty dollars. The land bank was created to remove blight, revitalize properties and improve the quality and safety of our neighborhoods and our community. It's work that I've been able to perform. It's above and beyond regular statutory duties of the county treasurer's office. It's extra. But his duties I've been able to perform because I have a trained, knowledgeable, experienced, reliable staff. Reducing my staff would reduce the opportunity for me to provide that service to the community. Commissioner Wiltie, Commissioner David, both lent a hand on my first project out in Mills Township, our first demolition project. They've experienced firsthand the difference that the land bank work can make in our neighborhoods. It'd be a disappointment to the community when we've retired to revitalize properties in a couple of neighborhoods in one township. And now that work may not be able to continue to other areas in our county. That has an impact on our community's safety. It has an impact on the revitalized, revitalization of our neighborhoods. And that also affects our taxable value base because when properties are revitalized and put back on the tax roll, that generates more revenue for this county, which provides more services in our community. My staff and I have worked diligently to create a well organized, efficient office with a balanced checkbook that did not previously exist in the county. I provide accurate financial records to you on a monthly and quarterly basis that you didn't have in the past. I respectfully request that you leave the treasurer's office staffing as is, so that the regimented work and the public service can continue uninterrupted. And as a co-employer, I request that any plan changes. I request that any plan changes to the office be discussed with me. At the ARPA meeting last week, Commissioner Wiltsey mentioned several times that we should be working together. The commissioner's department has elected officials. We should all be working as a team for the betterment of this community. As a co-employer, I should be part of the discussion and part of the planning process. What questions do you have for me today with regards to the information I've provided to you today?
Uh, I, I have a question.
Sure.
And I understand what you've done for. For knowing exactly what money is there.
Very important, Brenda. It's very important for the decisions that you make as a board to have accurate information.
My question is this. Does your, does your office need to continually, um? Cause my understanding was due to a short work forty hours a week, each person.
We, we initially requested that because of the. Amount of changes and improvements that I needed to create in that office. And then I had staffing changes, so I'd asked for that to continue so I could get the, the new staff trained. I am now at a point where I believe that the staff is trained. I have been able to cross-train employees. My answer would be no. I feel at this time it would be appropriate to. At the start of the year, go ahead and roll that back to the thirty-five hours. I think that the staff is trained well enough now to be able to do that.
Are you talking about the FY or the calendar year to go back?
The start of your fiscal year, October one. I've already told my staff be prepared that that change is coming because I can't support that request anymore. I feel that the staff is trained, they're efficient, they're knowledgeable. It does not need to continue.
Well, they're. And can we go back to thirty-five hours a week now? If they're trained and efficient and ready to go?
I would like them to have it some type of notice first. You know, that, that doesn't have an impact on their household income and their paycheck. So if you could say. Give them two weeks and give them notice that. That changes is, is coming. I think it would be appropriate.
So we said by August, let's say.
Sure.
Would that be all right?
I think it would be acceptable, but. I also need to know what other plans you have for my office. I've given you a list of just a handful of statutory requirements and you can. Verify it with Tim. He, he knows that everything I'm stating here today is fact.
I understand, but I would like to see it go back to, to thirty-five.
And I just agreed to that, Brenda.
I know you did.
I believe that my office is running efficient. I feel that I've got good cross-training in place now. I just don't wanna walk in there and say, oh, in two days that's happening. I think that.
No, and I understand that.
That it would be appropriate to give them at least a couple of week notice that that would happen to their.
That's almost a month's, month's notice. I think that, that's fair.
Fair.
And I do think you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do. Any more questions?
You're still running, you're still running with one part-time, right?
I have two full-time and one part-time in the office, which used to be three full-time. But I don't want the service to the public interrupted. I feel like we're at a point now. Where the public is truly getting the efficient service they deserve, and I've been able to do things above and beyond. I've been able to go out and do a community outreach program out in Mills Township. I've been able to do the land bank work. I've been able to provide support to our township treasurers that didn't exist in the past. You know, giving them the support and educational opportunities. That they deserve so that we all work together and have a comprehensive tax collection system, not just at the county level, but at the township.
No, it says, is that statutory?
Providing support for the townships?
Yeah.
No, it is not a statutory requirement, but for goodness sakes, efficiency at your level creates efficiency at the county.
Yeah, I get it. I, I, I just know that, I mean. Statutory, I think you have to because the elections. I just wondered if.
No, no, but I think it's good business.
No, I think.
I think it's, it's support that the townships need, because they are not given the opportunity for training and education. That they need to do their jobs. So any support that I can provide to them, which I'm able to do because I have good staff. That I'm able to do those extra things outside of the regular work hours. But without, with, with the reduction of my staff, I'm not gonna be able to do the extra things, because I'm gonna be the one doing the daily tasks. That's not what management is supposed to be doing.
No, that's not true.
I'm there to run the office and make decisions, not do the daily tasks.
Exactly.
I need the support and the staff that I have to do those daily tasks to allow me to do the extra service to the community and to the townships. Which makes a better county as a whole. Working together.
Thank you so much.
Do you have, do you have plans for my office that you can discuss with me today?
I don't think we have any plans. I don't know of any.
Because in, in June, it was said that there would be staff reductions to the treasurer's office.
That was the info, that was information, and I did say that. And that was information I had at the time.
So that is not the case now, other than to roll it back to thirty-five hours?
That's it. I mean, I haven't said anything at any of the other meetings since then.
Okay. I think, I think that's doable.
Okay.
That on the agenda then for next Thursday?
But. I think that two weeks isn't enough, but.
I would like to see it start at the beginning of the fiscal year when you change your budget, because that money is already budgeted.
Yeah, you're, and the tax reversion fund is paying for it. It's not even a general fund. The tax reversion, which can't be spent on anything else.
But I'm just wondering.
This is, this is a lifestyle change for people. I mean, uh, and you're in the middle of summer, you know? I don't think ninety days is too far out, but sixty for sure. I mean. You get. You get acclimated to that much, much money coming in. And then you cut it off, you know? Or what? For a political reason?
I'm willing to cooperate. I'm willing to sit at this table and work together. I'm just asking to, you know, give them a little time.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner. Scott, continue. Are you finished?
Um, I just think that two weeks isn't enough time. I think that we should go a little bit further out. I don't know. She's got a good plan with, with the, uh, one more quarter. I don't have problems with that. It's budgeted money, it's tax reversion money on top of that, it's a dedicated fund. It's not hurting our, our general budget at all. There's no, there's no issue with it.
Commissioner Wiltsey?
I agree with Commissioner Scott. I, I, I'm really pleased to see that, you know, Karen came here and feels really confident, the fact that. We are close to the point where we can go back to thirty-five hours. You know, uh, middle of summer, like I said, these people are, are used to where they were at. I feel Karen has a ton of passion for her jobs, therefore I think that passion shows, I would imagine, in her employees. I know she helps, she holds them very accountable. I've been working with Karen for five months, and, and one thing that really impressed me was when we first met at the Mills Township, I had my trailer and we were trying to, you know. We had some medals. I was like, well, I'll put the medals on the trailer and I can maybe take them and get, see if we can get a little bit of money. Well, we ended up not having much, it really wasn't even worth it. She called me two different times just to see if. If I was able to get a check or anything, and I really appreciated that. I mean, cause you do, you have a ton of passion for.
I was covered in mud.
Yeah, we all were covered in mud, but what I, what I'm getting at is that she's got a ton of passion for what she does. I think. She holds her employees accountable for what they do. I think it'd be right to go with her plan. She's brought it to us and said, you know, we are ready to go back to thirty-five, which I think we should be very happy about. But, uh. I think it would be good just to, to stick with the beginning of the fiscal year as, as Karen stated.
Commissioner Mayhew.
The only thing I got to say is, is she comes in here, she wants to balance the budget, she wants money. But it's okay to waste it until then. She doesn't need it. It's okay to waste it till then. Good point.
I didn't ask you to balance a budget. I discussed with you negative cash. That's been a problem. That's two different, that's two different topics. I, I did not say anything about balancing a budget when I was in here. I still got negative cash. And I'm not wasting money. I have a very, very. Efficient, knowledgeable, well-trained staff, and I'm just asking for a courtesy. To give them a couple of weeks' notice before changing their paycheck. I'm not here to waste money. Commissioner Scott can speak to that. That was a very ineffective, inefficient office before I came in, and I have worked very, very hard to make it a balanced checkbook. Provide you with accurate financial information so you can make informed decisions. That didn't exist for the last decade. I'm not wasting time, I'm not wasting money. I, I feel I'm doing an amazing job. And have created a great opportunity for this county to be in a better place. I work very hard, Mr. Mayhew. I'm not here to waste anything.
You're the one that said my staff is trained.
I did. I asked for a courtesy for them. To give them a couple of weeks' notice. That's the courtesy I asked for.
Fine, let's just stop until October. September thirty. I can tell September thirty.
I'm just asking for a courtesy for my employees. That's what I'm requesting. I don't think it's an unreasonable request, in my opinion.
Any other comments?
What kind of motion do we have for next week then?
I don't think you need one at this stage, as, you know, we're planning on the budget for twenty-four now. We will incorporate the thirty-five hour work week. You'll have that, um, by the end of the month, I believe, so.
Okay, well, as long as, you know, our board doesn't wanna impose an order on the treasurer.
What did you say when you said put this on for Thursday? What were?
Well, I was asking, there was a suggestion that this would take place on, on August first, and if we did that. We need to change the position allocation list so that we can. Make that, but if we're gonna wait until the fiscal year, you'll have a whole new allocation list at that point to work with.
Well, Brenda, you're, you're pretty much the deciding.
I'm not the deciding factor. You guys are all the deciding.
If we're gonna have a motion or not.
So.
If we're not, then, then we're not, you know, then that runs status quo.
And there are no other changes being discussed from my office?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time today.
So, and I do understand the, um, all of a sudden, it's like this and the goal, uh, the clip is. It'd be pretty tough. I understand that it's been here and then all of a sudden you go up the cliff like that. It'd be pretty tough for an employee to adjust that quickly.
Well.
Well, absolutely.
You're gonna drop down the phone, yeah, absolutely, you know.
And I would imagine with, I mean, Karen is consistently coming here, explaining to us what she's doing. I feel, I think a bunch of us agree, you know, her commitment to us, so. Until that fiscal year is over, she's gonna take advantage of those extra hours of the employees and continue to sharpen the pencil, continue to make moves. But, you know, it's not like they're just gonna be sitting back and, I mean, she, proof's in the pudding, she, she, you know, so.
When you do those thirty-five, those forty hours, you just, you just work through your lunch to do that.
Correct. We're also working on a project. I was saving this for the next elective officials report, but right now we're working on. Uh, archiving the old records from the eighteen hundreds and the early nineteen hundreds to transform that, those records to the state of Michigan. Which will take up less storage space here, which is an issue here at the county. It's a big task, it's a big undertaking, it's a lot of dirty, dusty work, but. I've been keeping Tim informed on the progress we're making on that. It's something I was gonna tell you about at the next meeting under the elected official report. I always have a project. I always have something extra that we're doing. We're not just sitting back twiddling our thumbs, people. We are working hard. We are. Cleaning up things that have been ignored for years in that office.
No, the thing is, it's, this is extra five hours. It's not even overtime. This is just basic time.
I know.
You know, and, and like I said, it's tax reversion money. If we don't spend it there, it'll just go back in tax reversion. It's not gonna help any other budget out. It's not gonna help out the whole county or anything like that.
How do you feel about?
You're in the middle of summer. Do these people, does, you know, gotta, you gotta think of the employees sometimes, and. Does somebody have a?
Vacation.
A vacation scheduled and they're, they're banking on that extra hundred and twenty-five dollars? You know? And then all of a sudden, we're just, the commissioner, commissioners come along in the middle, right in the middle of the summer and say, oh, we're gonna pull the carpet out from underneath you.
Okay, I understand, but if they're working through their lunch, then other offices, offices should be able to work through their lunch and then leave early.
I don't, I don't agree with working through your lunch. I think the office should be able to close or, or. You can cover it back and forth if you can in, in a particular office. But if they're allotted a lunch, they should be able to take a lunch. Uh.
And, and I agree.
I, I, I had a coconut. A, a coconut, uh, in a, in a. In a sandwich in the garbage truck, driving along and still doing the job, but. No, no, I told my guys one night, when you get a break, you take a break. That's what it is.
So, but, but in this case, they're, they're working through their lunch, so my, my question would be then, can others work through their lunch and just leave early?
No, I don't think that, no, no. We allot lunch periods. So that they take that short, that short breather during the day. That's exactly what. Yeah, you don't wanna eat something, that's fine with me. I, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna take you to the truck, but I'm not gonna make you drink out of it, but. You can stand right there and relax. Uh, yeah, you get a break. I mean, that's what it is. I mean.
But the treasurer's office is not taking a break. They're working through their lunch.
Well. As a co-employer, I would recommend. The treasurer give them a lunch break period. But I can't micromanage your department. I can't tell her that they have to. Stop and. Whatever.
So that's what, then we're saying that applies to every office, so.
Every office, yeah. Every office that's got an elected official in it, especially.
Yeah.
Now, in some offices, they're not elected, then we can, we can mandate that.
I wanna point out that in, in this office is in particular is subject to. Terms in a collective bargaining agreement that says the employees are entitled to a one-hour unpaid lunch. We leave it to the department heads to administer when that occurs. So if they wanna stagger. Lunches, they can do that. Ultimately, that department head is gonna have the final say though on when that's scheduled. I trust that the treasurer has worked this out with the employees of that department, and I can say that, I think, with authority, because. We've got no grievances on this. If, if this weren't, uh, be administered according to the contract. There's a process in place to grieve that. We, we don't have that grievance, and, and so my assumption is everybody is satisfied with the scheduling that's, that's already in place.
No, there haven't been any complaints. I was, and I don't have any problems with that. All right, I don't have any problems with that. But, you know, i- if that's the case, and people are working through their lunches, then. There should be. Times to have that some can work through their lunch from other offices and just leave early.
That, that same rule applies to those other offices.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you. Good job. Thank you. All right, so we don't need.
Okay, we can move on with it.
Okay, we don't need to put that on the, um, agenda for next time.
Not hearing anybody saying they want it, so.
Okay. Our clerk.
Um, so my, my, both of mine kinda go together. Um, I will put the election. Update stuff at the end, but they do kinda go together. It was said in a public meeting in June that there were gonna be some changes and there was. Surprised that there was no kickback from any of the departments. To start out, I just, I want to. I want to know what changes do you guys plan for my office?
Right now, none. That I'm aware of.
Because, uh, like treasurer said, we are co-employers with our union employees. I would hope. That there would be discussion between. All of us, rather than being blindsided or. You guys coming up with a plan. I'm asking you guys, if you are going to come up with a plan to do something different, please come to our offices. I'm respectfully asking. Come to the offices and do the research to see what each person does, to see how busy our office is. To see where we're at, what we're doing.
We would have done that anyways, Brick. We would, we would have done that anyways.
And I appreciate that, and I have to say, our commu, our communication, we have. Really, we've been really good with our communication lately, and I. Really, we've been really good with our communication lately, and I appreciate that, and I wanna continue that because. Yes, like Karen said, we are a team, Charlie has. One of the strongest points I feel like he's been trying to make since he started is. We are a team, we do have to work together. And that's, I just, I'm putting that out there, I would like to be informed before any changes happen, um. I don't know what uh for the statutory duties of what the county clerk does, um. There is a lot, there is a lot, uh, so, I'm just gonna go through a few of them. So the duties of the clerk, um, by the state statute, they include the clerk of the court, meaning. We clerk the court hearings, I have a deputy for that, but. We are responsible for all of the filings, taking all that in, that is not a simple task, it's not. Something anybody off the street can do, um. The chief election official of the county, that's the biggest one, and Commissioner Simmons, like, we discussed last week. The next year of elections is gonna be huge, um. With the the passing of the proposal to change to the nine days early voting, that alone is going to. Put more of a workload in terms of elections on me. And then you have my chief deputy, who is also a township clerk, who we both. Can and I can answer the county questions, she can answer the township questions. And we are an amazing team, we work together in the election process to make it as smooth and. Seamless as we can for the townships, because yes, I do have to answer to them, I do have to help them. Um, clerk of the county jury board. The clerk of the Board of Campers. The clerk of the Board of Commissioners, the clerk of the County Apportement Commission, the clerk of the. County Election Commission, the clerk of the County Platt Board, and I also am the Vital Records Register. Along with the Airport Board, the Security Board, now the Opioid Board, um, and I also do jury trials. My chief deputy plays a key role in my absence, and with that list, I it's not every day. That I have to do something in regards to this, but. I am constantly being pulled in different directions, um, my chief deputy plays a key role in my office, in my absence. Uh, there's a second. In command. They're responsible for managing all of my day-to-day operations in my office when I'm not there, um. So, according to MCL fifty point six three, each county clerk shall appoint one or more deputy to be approved by the circuit judge. One of whom shall be designated in the appointment as the successor of such clerk in case of vacancy for many cause. And may revoke such appointment at his pleasure, which appointment and revocation shall be in writing under his hand and filed in the office of the county treasurer. And the deputy or deputies may perform the duties of such clerks. I say this. Because the next year, we do have three, three elections, don't know when for sure they will be. Um, we will know by the first week in August, hopefully, if it will be a February or March election. Um.
And it's the state that tells you that.
And it's the state that tells us that, yep, there's a bunch of legislature going on right now that. That's gonna determine when the presidential primary is, um. So, I say this because we have the three elections to to take out. My right-hand man will literally cut me off at my feet, I, I need her to be able. To function properly, um.
Yeah.
The elections are such a huge, huge portion of my statutory duties. Um, and point blank, my chief is my choice, and I wouldn't. I would hope that I would never be asked to have to choose a different one, because you can't just. Take somebody out and say, anybody can learn elections, anybody can learn this, anybody can, but if you. Want to be successful, as we do. We need good quality people, and I have that, and I do not want to lose that. Um, so I came to the previous board a year ago, um. With backing from Judge Williams and the Chief Judge, uh Judge Bennett. Requesting an additional part-time employee to ensure my office could be serviceable to the public and to be able to handle the influx in court. Specific duties. Currently, we have three court clerks, and then a financial clerk, uh, one of which has special requirements for a schedule. We've been given directive from the chief judge that our office must be open, we we cannot close for lunch. Um, so we do have, we have to work around that, and we do, we do, our, my office does take their lunches. It is up to the department or the elected official as the co-employer. Um, there, there are some days that they do work through their lunch and leave early if they have appointments or whatever, not all the time, but. We do, we do that. Um. So we can't, we can't close early, we used, we used to be open nine to four to the public. And then we did get that extra person, which has helped tremendously, and we're we're now in a place where we are, if you guys have. Go into the other room over here, we are so close to being done with our big archive project. It's been a huge undertaking, and we're, that is a project that we are so close to being done to, um. The comment was made in a public meeting that two people would be gone with no explanation of what that plan was. My office cannot support losing one person, let alone two. Um, just with the upcoming, with the elections alone, and that's not including all of the court stuff. Um, being serviceable to the public for all of their vital requests and the CPLs and. We can, we cannot afford to lose another person and still be serviceable. So, like I said before, before any decisions are made, I'm requesting that each of you do your research. Um, see how our offices function on a weekly and a daily basis, uh, given our court schedules and all of the everyday. Other functions, um, honestly, there's times and Commissioner Scott was witness to it. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, when he told me he'd come back and talk to me about something, and he came back and. We had a line down the hallway, everybody was on the phone, and. He opened the door and popped his head in and left immediately. We didn't, we have days like that where we are so slammed, we need the people here to be serviceable. Um. So again, I am respectfully asking that you do communicate with me if it has something to do with my employees or my office. We're all supposed to be a team and. I'm gonna speak for the treasurer, and I'm gonna speak for the sheriff, because we all took office at the same time with the intention. Of making this place better, we want to do what's best for our community, because they're the people that we're serving, we're not our own personal agendas. We have, we don't have personal agendas, we're trying to do what is best for our community. And to cut us off at the legs, we can't, we cannot be as serviceable to our community, we cannot do the things that we're doing. Um. So.
This election update, this is huge.
This is huge, this is huge.
Nine, nine days, everybody is able to vote nine days ahead of time, within nine days.
Nine consecutive days prior to.
You went to the MTA meeting.
Yep.
And and talked about it and offered to the, to the county, to the, to the township people.
Yep.
An opportunity to vote eight days here.
Excuse me.
Nine days.
Excuse me, the clerk was talking, I'd like you to finish talking, what you're talking about.
Well, and and that, that's, I mean, that's where we're leading into. You three were at the MTA meeting, so you have an idea of what I'm about to say, I've talked to Tim about it. Um. What I, so Roger or Commissioner Mayhew, this is new information to you probably. Um, with the new proposal that had passed, they are now. For state and federal elections, it is mandatory nine days early voting. What I proposed at the MTA meeting was to eliminate. Or lessen the expenses at the township levels to have the nine days early voting in the county building. The, there will be additional expenses, but. We're gonna have, so my plan right now, I have an agreement, and I didn't put it on the iPads or anything because it is with the county attorney right now. Um, so we're working on an administrative agreement that's basically gonna cover everything. What it will do is make me or my chief deputy the early voting coordinator, so we will be. In charge of the election for the whole nine days early, um. The plan as of right now would be. Eight thirty to four thirty, when the building is open, it's nine days, and there's a weekend in there, so. It gives people plenty of opportunity to get here if they can't get to the polls on election day. Um, there was talk about maybe doing an extended day for for nighttime people to be able to come. Um, but again, it's all stuff that still needs to be worked out, I'm just bringing it to your attention now because. There's gonna have to be contracts and negotiations worked out, um, but it's gonna be huge, it's. All three of the elections next year are going to be nine days early, which is going to basically take my time. That's what my year is going to be consumed of, um. The responsibilities that we have in my office in regards to elections. I literally do everything except for the maintenance on the machines. The coating of the ballots. Basically, everything else is in my hands, I need. The people in my office to be there, to be able to serve the community so that I can properly. Handle this workload with the elections. I need my chief deputy to be right by my side to be able to handle all of. Everything that comes along with this nine days early, um. The, so for a timeline, so you guys kinda have an idea of where we're at. Um, like I said earlier, with the legislature going through right now. The state has until August, the first week in August, to determine, yep, to determine, which is a month. Thirty-ish days from now, that's their deadline to determine whether it'll be a February or a March election. Um, I need to have this contract. Set and signed sixty days before the election, um, which means. Most likely, my election year is gonna start in December, um. So, that is, and there's a lot more to it than just people coming in and voting. Because we'll have all of the town, the whole community will be coming here to vote, so my county tabulator will be set up for the each. Township to vote, and then we'll have to upload those results to the townships each night, there's more than just come and vote. It's not just a, hey, here you go, do it, done, um. The. Financial part of it, we haven't figured that part out yet, um, like I said, this is just the beginning discussions on this. Uh, but the townships will be sending, we need three people here each day, so the plan is. The townships will be sending workers. I've requested their best workers, um, because obviously, we, we want. We don't want this to be a disservice to the whole community, we want what's, we want the top-notch people here to take care of us, um. You see what can happen in an election year when people don't have faith in. Who's running the election or the processes, um.
How are you gonna get that many people through the building?
Honestly, we're not expecting it to be huge. I mean, there's still absentee voting, so just with the, just with the. Supervisors and clerks, basically, who we talked to at MTA, um. Nobody's expecting this to be a huge nine days, crazy people coming in and out. Because you still do have election day, you still can vote absentee, the people that vote absentee are probably still gonna vote absentee. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be a rush of people, our expectation is, it's not gonna be.
Township's still gonna be open on election day.
Yes, they'll still, everything will still be done election day in the township, so if you can vote. In your township hall, election day, just like normal. But now with all this, the proposal to passing, it's mandatory that. They have the opportunity to vote in person nine days early. Uh, so just for an example, um, if every township were to do their own election. It would cost them an additional seventy-four hundred bucks, just by averaging. Um, the wages of the workers. And at the MTA meetings, we've heard how how little some of the townships have extra, I mean, some have a lot, some.
No one disagreed.
Yeah.
No.
They all were.
Very happy.
Yep, they were.
Let's do this, do it, please, um, so that's kinda what we have going. Um, in the works. And I will have more, once, once I I I contacted the county attorney last week, um. Knowing it was Fourth of July weekend, and I said, I I do not intend to get this back right away. Work on it, tell me who I need to discuss out of the firm, get all the details, and then I will come back to you with. More of a concrete plan once, once that discussion takes place, um. And I will keep you guys all informed of where I'm at throughout the process and it, cuz it is, it's a big change and. I'm gonna need your guys' support.
Okay.
Right, I guess the question, so when we were at the MTA meeting, when you brought this up, I mean, immediately to me, my first reaction was, this is a great idea. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of um different actions that you've gotta figure out and you're gonna figure out, but just cost savings alone and. You know, it's a nine-day span to go, like Commissioner Mayhew, what you're saying about a a big flux of people, nine-day span is. Right. Gonna average things out where I don't see that being a problem, but my question was, and I I was gonna ask you this, but I didn't get an opportunity. Is this your guys' own vision, your team, or is this something like, you've read through the state that other counties are kind of gonna do this also? Or is this like your guys' vision, and now you're trying to bring it?
No, so. We have, like, she has the treasurer's group, sheriff's group, we have Michigan Association of County Clerks. So, we kinda have a. Group discussion, best practices, and that's where it all came about, pretty much. Um, from what it sounds like, this is what. This is what it's going to look like for a lot of the counties, I'm not sure about the larger counties. But the smaller ones, and, and my district alone, we just had a meeting two weeks ago here, in fact, and we were throwing around ideas and uh, every one of us are doing it because it is such a huge cost savings. So, and what I, what I do believe will happen is that by the end, everybody will be doing the same thing, or there'll be a couple different locations.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Scott, you have any comments? Mr. Mayhew? You have any comments? I was at the MTA, I thought it was a great idea. No one said no to it. None of the townships said no, believe me. But, and the conversation with Brett was, there are a lot of unanswered questions and she's been asking the questions and the state doesn't even know the answers yet. So it's, it's a whole new animal this time.
I've been calling the Bureau literally every day, every other day. Trying to stay on top of it.
Please keep a surprise.
You keep your surprises, not surprises, and I'll keep my surprises, not surprises.
So do you know yet? I mean, is that nine-day voting, just from eight to four thirty so far? We don't know yet.
No, because like at the MTA meeting, I told the boards, go to your meetings, discuss it. Give me all your feedback. I don't, I don't want to do, I wanna do what the people want me to do.
I just don't know what the state's gonna require, that's the thing.
It's just eight hours.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, and we were thrown around the eight thirty to four thirty because that would be no additional cost for security in our building. Except for on the weekends, but like I said, the townships will be tripping in.
Yeah, but there will be other security issues too, and I already Any questions from the, anybody else? Tim? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, we had some discussion irons, the con- controller this transition.
I was tasked at the last board meeting with discussing what the duties and functions of the controller were at this meeting. I provided a few documents for you, a couple in particular. One of them is the contract that was signed in May. And the second is the actual statutory language, you know, just briefly review each of those. I would draw your attention first to section one of the contract itself. Uh, I think very succinctly states the duties and functions are to perform all legally permissible and proper duties, functions that the Board of Commissioners may from time to time assign to him, including but not limited to, they'll set forth in a job description approved by the board and attached as appendix A, and I'll get into appendix A in a little bit more detail in a second. Uh, but that's, that's where a lot of the day-to-day duties are listed. But at the end of that section, there's also the sentence that states, while employed under this agreement, the administrator controller will abide by and comply with the policies and governance directives of the employer, which is you, Board of Commissioners. That's not to say that I won't participate in discussions from time to time if I think you're going off on a track that maybe you shouldn't. Uh, but it does, and I take this very seriously, mean that once you've made a decision, that's what we do. That's what the policy is. That's how we function. As an example, if you started talking about the chairs in this room and we're debating whether or not those chairs should have legs, I might suggest to you, no, we kind of need the legs on the chairs for people to sit comfortably, but if you pass a motion, majority states, all the legs on the chairs come off, guess what's gonna happen? So at that point, debate's over. Hopefully, I'll convince you to the worthiness of having legs on the chairs, but I may not. And, and so then it's up to me to follow through with that directive of the board. Also, uh, the duty, ma- one of the main duties is to manage the day-to-day activities of the county that are not assigned by statute or Board of Commissioners delegation to other county officials, and that the Board of Commissioners will give direction to the administrator controller on matters of policy. Here with all due respect, if you have an idea that you want pursued, tell me. If you want a particular reorganization looked at and, and reviewed, I'm happy to do that. I'm all about doing it. Uh, the merits of that we can discuss later, but you need to have those cold, hard facts in front of you. I just need to know that, that you want it. That's all. That just needs to be communicated. I also have an obligation in the contract to provide at least a monthly report with an update on county business. You're getting those reports twice a month right now. They're fairly detailed. One of the statements that was made by a motion at the last meeting was that I needed to perform the functions of the controller within two weeks or be reclassified as an administrator. I respectfully ask, what functions of the controller are not being performed? I need to know. We also have in the contract that I will recommend and implement policies of the board relating to general administration, including without limitation, budget and financial management, employer relations and labor negotiations, facilitate and equipment management, uh, and internal services as requested by the board or initiated by myself as appropriate and necessary. That goes to just the day-to-day functions of the job itself. Moving on, and, uh, in the contract, I would want to point out section eight as well, where I'll perform all duties and obligations in complete compliance with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, ordinances, rules, and regulations. This can be a challenge from time to time, as we have a number of past practices that may or may not be fully compliant with some of these other laws, ordinances, and regulations, but part of my job is, as we find these, we correct them. Uh, we'll be discussing a lot of those, particularly during labor negotiations, or often questions about things like the Family Medical Leave Act, and how do they apply? What are we doing to make sure that it's enforced correctly? What about the ADA Act? And what about FOIA and all those other types of acts that we have to, uh, comply with? We have an obligation to do that. There is a section I did want to point out, uh, that goes to the reclassification to a different position. Uh, section fourteen of the contract speaks to amendments or modifications to the contract. And they may only, or they may be amended or modified only by written agreement of the parties. That's the board and myself. A simple motion of the board doesn't do it. We need to negotiate that amendment and come terms as to whether or not we're going to, uh, make any changes. Now, appendix A is the actual job description itself, and I'm not going to read all fourteen of the essential functions. They each consist of anywhere from one to about five sentences. Uh, we could be here, um, uh, quite a while just reading those. I'm happy to do it if you want to, but it's provided to you in its format. And see the detail. There is, um, scope of responsibility and authority section that I think does a good job of summarizing what some of those essential functions are. Uh, but that's where you want to turn if you're looking for any specific, uh, duty that you've already assigned. And keep in mind, you do have the authority to make other assignments, uh, by motion of the board. Uh, you can direct me to do things that may not be on this list. That's, that's an option that's always available to you. Next document that I provided for you is an excerpt from the County Board of Commissioners Act. And particularly, uh, section forty-six point thirteen B, which is also referenced in the contract itself. And this is by statute, the controller is the chief accounting officer of the county and shall have charge and supervision of the accounts and accounting of every office, officer, and department of the county, the whole or any part of the expense of which is borne by the county. So if in effect you have something that you've budgeted or some expense that you've, uh, gone ahead and approved, uh, it's up to the person in the position of the controller to see that those wishes are carried out in accordance with, uh, policies that you've adopted. The controller also shall see that a system of accounting is installed and properly kept by every office, officer, and department of the county in strict accord with the provisions of law, and in addition to which he may prescribe the direct keeping of such other accounts and records and the making of such reports as in his judgment are necessary and proper, uh, uh, necessary to properly record and report the financial transactions of the county. Now, what does this mean? Well, first of all, uh, keeping the, the system of accounting, uh, in accord with the provisions of law, we are governed by the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act, completely separate statute. That really dictates to us what type of accounting functions we're gonna do. We have some authority within the organization, for instance, to, uh, purchase a software package to help that happen. But everything is organized and according to that statute. All of our departments are bound by that statute. Uh, and that's really, it makes it easy for us to, to verify whether or not our system of accounting is tracking the way it's supposed to, and we do reference it quite a bit. Uh, I've had absolutely no pushback from any department whenever I requested any kind of a record or report of any financial activity. Uh, again, it's just a matter of asking. They've all been very good about very promptly, uh, providing that, and that's necessary in order to perform uh, the budgeting, um, aspect in particular, so that we understand what exactly are we asking to, asking for you to fund. The controller shall keep in his office a general ledger, which shall be set up, uh, controlling the accounts, uh, which shall show at all times the assets and liabilities of the county and of which, uh, in each and every fund of the county. Again, you have, uh, authorized us to use that BSNA software package, uh, and we can produce any of this at any time. I certainly don't take any credit for setting it all up. That was, that was all done in the clerk and treasurer's office, which needed to happen in order to assure compliance with the statutes that they are, uh, bound by, but we do maintain it, uh, and it is, uh, something that you can access through my office. We also give departments, uh, access to the general ledger as well. So if you had a specific question about planning, for instance, the planning and zoning administrator can provide that information as well. As a controller, I also am
I have to leave, you can continue, but I, I have this call.
Um, your call, we can recess if you want to. I'm, I'm almost, I'm almost finished, so, um. I also have a responsibility to examine regularly the books and accounts of the several offices, agents, and departments of the county and report those findings to you. You receive those monthly reports now, and we do regularly our quarterly budget adjustments. Uh, that is happening, uh, and it has happened for, for a while now. Uh, the controller shall make all purchase of books, stationary materials, and supplies with, uh, which may be required or used by the county and its officers and agents. We have delegated some of that budgeting responsibility and that purchase responsibility directly to departments. Uh, but those do all pass through the general ledger, and I, they do have access to all that. But again, we have rules set up uh, that departments are regularly following, uh, without a whole lot of discretion. Controller shall also be the custodian and have charge of the operation, maintenance, and repairs of the county courthouse and grounds, including any power, heating, or lighting plant in connection therewith. And in like manner, the repairs to the county jail. He shall not create any liability in excess of the appropriation made, uh, by the board. This, this is relatively new. I mean, this is something that was being done directly as an administrator, but now there's no question, billing and grounds reports to the controller. Uh, and ultimately, any decisions to purchase particularly big-ticket items come through not only me, but must abide by the, the purchasing policy that you've adopted. There's no special waiver that the controller gets. They spend over and above what you've already recommended or actually approved by policy. And, uh, but one catch-all sentence at the end of the statute as well, the controller shall perform such other duties as the board may impose. So again, that comes down to a meeting of the board. If you find there's something new, opioid, for instance, comes along, you want to assign some of that task to me, that's within uh, the scope of the authority of the board to do that. And hopefully you have confidence that I will carry that out. So that's my review, uh, the nickel tour. Um, I think, um, if there are any questions, I'm certainly available here to answer them, but as I think I have communicated to all of you at all times, I'm available to you by phone whenever you have an issue. I mean, I'd be able to take the call right away, but you do get priority, uh, of any kind of follow-up that has to happen. It includes also with emails. Uh, emails can be helpful if you need some research done so that I know exactly what it is you're looking for, and we're not spinning our wheels. But I think a theme that you've heard from both the treasurer and the clerk as well, I need to know what you, what you want. I can't come to a meeting and just simply, uh, uh, through some kind of clerk points, understand what it is you're asking for. It's very helpful if that can be done ahead of the meeting so that we can all be prepared and have a good, healthy, educated discussion about whatever the issue might be.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any, uh, comments from anybody?
Well, I'm kind of waiting for your comment. You, you, you guys have been the ones that have been questioning everything right from the day of the contract to, that we, uh, voted on the contract, uh, you debated back and forth just the provisions on, uh, you didn't, you didn't talk to, didn't, didn't, uh, discuss wages, hours, or anything? Just what would you do if you got rid of them? Then we passed it and got it. Now there's been comments made since then. It was just like the clerk and the treasurer said, it's public knowledge that you guys came right out and said, I thought that we were gonna see a reduction of people. I didn't hear that any meeting, and I was totally tilting off guard. You know, my observation is somebody's talking behind closed doors about stuff, and I don't know anything about it. So I'm kind of waiting for your comments about this. Is he, is he doing a job or isn't he? Think the commissioner liked it, say something.
I, I don't know what meetings you did in a ten. But Brett started crying because she thought she was gonna lose somebody out of our office in one of the meetings. And as far as we knew when it first started, there was gonna lose a person. You were gonna lose a person. Tim was gonna make more money.
With me or in a public meeting. I never cried in a public meeting. I haven't cried over this.
I don't know if it was in a closed meeting or what, but yes, you did. I have no reason to lie.
I missed one, but I went back.
I didn't dream this out. This did happen. And now it's like, we're in some conspiracy. I, I, I don't know how three people drained the whole thing up. We sat right here in this office. And that was part of the thing, and that's what I was asking about. We were not, it's not like you guys are gonna lose the greatest employee you got. You were gonna get Tim. I, I don't know. I mean,
Whose office were you sitting in? Whose office were you sitting in?
This office, right here, this bu- this building, right here. This is where it was done.
Well, I don't ever remember, and I, I, there was one meeting on this, and I went back on YouTube and watched it, and there was nothing said about eliminating.
Brett said, I don't want to lose my girl.
Okay, she said that, but what commissioner said that, you guys came right out and said, we thought that when he gave us this transition paper with the three options of, of, of how to do, you guys said, oh, we thought that somebody, two positions were gonna be gone. That's the first I ever heard of that.
Wait just a second. Go ahead, Commissioner Mayhew. It was at the first meetings, and like you said, no, that's what I thought. That's what I heard. That's why I asked.
You can go on.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I could have been, since we've been sworn in, I've been at every Haven't missed a meeting. I try to take close attention to what we're doing. I made it very clear that I try to educate myself every week, because a lot of this stuff was new to me. I'm having a real hard time understanding where Commissioner Mayhew is going with this. I have never been in a meeting where I heard the words that the treasurer's office would lose an employee, that the clerk's office would lose an employee if we made our county administrator also commission, also controller. I've never heard that. Period.
I have.
Zero. Period. Have never heard that. I've been here at every meeting. Pay attention. I listen.
Did you see Ms. Gilner cry? I'm losing a person.
Doesn't matter.
I don't, I remember she got emotional about the, when we had the conversation of possible not coming to a contract with our county administrator and be losing him. I don't remember her crying. That's the only time I remember her becoming emotional. I'm just telling you.
No, that's fine.
Where I'm at with this.
I don't care.
Well, I, I will make a comment. I, I wasn't, I was. In a minute, I've, I've gone back and, and looked. And I didn't. I haven't found anything about. Losing the people, but. I heard it, I heard it somewhere. And that's, that's why I brought it up. I haven't brought it up since. Have I? No.
No.
But. I know, I know I've heard it. I heard it somewhere. And, and I thought it was at a meeting. I haven't found it. Could have been closed session, whatever. But I know I, I know I heard it somewhere. And that's why I brought that up. When I was sitting there. But I have not, I have not found it on any recordings yet. So. And I'm not going to continue. Look, I mean, I've gone back. So, but I know I heard it somewhere.
And that's, that's why I said it?
I wouldn't have said it if I wouldn't have heard it somewhere. So. Any more comments?
I'll offer this again. It's been mentioned already once today, but we are in the process of creating our budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four. If there are any restructuring ideas that commissioners would like to see studied a little deeper. Happy to do it. In the meantime, I'm charged with under statute presenting you with a balanced budget. Absolutely intend to do that in terms of the schedule that we adopted. That's also an opportunity to debate whether or not that's the structure you want to move forward with. Plenty of opportunity between now and September to make any changes you want. And I just hope that you give us the opportunity to flush out those changes so that we know what the pros and cons are before we proceed. In the meantime, we have a system that is working and working fairly well. So you can rest assured that if nothing is done, that you're going to meet all the obligations under various statutes and your own policies that we have to meet. But this is the time, this is the time of year each year that we really take a deep dive into what this organization looks like. And what your priorities are and to budget accordingly.
Any other comments?
Well, I think this plays into just what he's, he's done all. Himself done all along. He's given us options. Given us opportunities to input. I've already had discussions with them. I'll tell you that right up front about. Different departments and how we should be looking at it. And, and I'm going to continue to do that. But. He's, he's continually gave us options. In the, in all three years that he's been here. He does not go out and freelance to do these things on his own. Now, without input though. Then he has to rely on, he, he has to make some decisions. But he's offered an opportunity for input. Not only just from the commissioners who he directly answers to. But he's, he's done this with department heads and elected officials also. You know, it's, it's up to us. If, if he asks us for input and we don't want to give it to him. Well, then shame on you. You had the opportunity. Whether it's in a public meeting or in a private meeting, you can come right out and say, hey, I want to. I want to cut back on buying so much soap for the janitors. You can say that. I think, I think Ray uses too much soap for the, for the transit buses, so we should cut that back. You know, you could say that. That's input.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, I, this is just an example. Ray's buses are washed. And they look great. Anyway, it's just, it's just if you don't, if you don't put input in, then. He's, he doesn't have guidance.
Thank you. Any comments?
Well, two weeks ago, you wanted them to, to be up to stuff on controller. Is he doing his job or not?
I don't know.
Well.
I'm going to have to study it up.
Any other comments? Okay, interpret, interpretation of resolution twenty two dash one twenty seven, that's per diems.
Right. You do have one additional document that you didn't have a couple of weeks ago. And that's the breakdown of the per diem rates of the various groups that you act as liaison to. We've not yet still heard directly back from district health department number two, although we do understand they do provide a per diem. We just haven't had the official return call. But you can see from, for instance, the commission on aging down to the D H H S board, down to the Northern Michigan Regional Agency. For substance abuse, those per diems that are paid. Two of them, the Northeast Michigan Community Service Agency and the Michigan Works Region Seven B. Don't pay per diems, but they do reimburse mileage as a participants there. Now, the question comes down to this. Does the per diem rate come from your budget? County Board of Commissioners' general fund budget? Or in the case of these liaison committees, does it come from their budgets? In particular, when we're dealing with groups like the EMS board or district health department number two. Or the nine one one emergency dispatch authority, those are separate entities that are. You know, reported in our audit, but separate entities that do their own budgets. You don't approve them. You don't have any. Any day to day activity with them at all. We do have groups like our planning commission that does meet, does provide a per diem, does have a line in their general fund budget to pay those per diems. To me, it, it really doesn't matter. It can come from your budget. It can come from those budgets. I would suggest that in particular where we have agencies that, that are not directly reporting to you. Creating their own budgets, that that would be the appropriate place to take the per diem from. But. If you prefer that it all come from the county board budget, that can happen too. I just need to know which direction to go. I think the rest weekend that you passed in January is, well, actually you didn't. It was the prior board that. Adopted this, but I think it's pretty clear about what constitutes a standing committee. And what constitutes liaison committee and where those per diems come from. But because it was questioned, because there was an idea that maybe it should be done a little bit differently than what I thought. That's why I'm here for the interpretation.
Do you know if it is a statute that a county commissioner has to be on, on the NMSKA board or no?
That probably is a NMSKA rule, so we are likely to be a standing member of that group. And so that's why we have the seat and the same would hold true for groups like the mental health authority. There are seats reserved for commissioners, not by you, but by those authorities. In the case of the mental health authority, I think there probably is a statutory requirement that participating counties are participants on that governing body.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
No, I'm, 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 I'm fine with the idea of the outer committee. These outside components of the county. If they pay a payout. Whether it's mileage or per diem that they should pay our commissioners the same thing out of their budgets.
You're talking about these, these that are listed right here, that have their own.
Like the EMS.
Yeah, their own standalone.
Yep.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Good.
Thank you for the interpretation.
So I mean. If, if they. One is, one is there, then they should pay, like I've said, NMSKA gives mileage, but no per diem, so. But I do know the health department gives a per diem and mileage if we have to listen. So.
Now, a planning commissioner is a component of the county, but. There is a, a line item in there for per diems. So. I mean, in that case, they ought to just, the commissioner just sign the sheet and get paid that way too.
Yep.
Not to have burned it in the other way.
Any more comments? Okay, thank you. What's this region nine aging implementation plan for aging services?
Each year, the mission on aging asks us to review and approve the area agency plan. This is where a lot of their funding is generated. This plan is turned into the state. There are likely matching funds and, and maybe even some grants that. Commission on Aging applies more based on this. But this is a state requirement that this be approved annually. And it's become rather routine. There aren't many changes. From what you've seen in prior years. But it is important that you consider and if so inclined, that you approve the plan by resolution.
So no, no major change. This is kind of general business.
It, it really is business as usual. Like again, I didn't see anything that stood out. You do have the cover letter. That commission on aging provided that gives you a brief synopsis. They do ask though that this be approved by July twentieth. So the imperative that this would appear on your next agenda next week with the resolution to approve.
Go ahead and put it on the agenda then. Okay, now we're down to the body scanner.
I've included the material that you've seen prior on the body scanner. We did have the discussion about. Use of opioid monies to pay for this and the concerns that were raised by council. We did discuss prior to opioid money even being on the table, the idea of using maybe a combination of ARPA and. Commissary funds to purchase this. It certainly could all be done with ARPA funds as well. Yeah, I was reminded this morning of an article I actually read yesterday on a Chippewa county. Ed Nenmay die over the weekend because he was able to smuggle in a balloon that he swallowed with drugs. That balloon ruptured and he overdosed. He had a companion with him. They, once they realized what was happening with the person that was arrested with him, he was taken to the hospital. At the same situation, they were able to surgically remove that. Body scanner will at least when somebody's being brought into the jail, will provide one more opportunity. For our corrections officers to spot something like this and get that person to the hospital rather than admitting them to the jail. And having to deal with what ultimately was a, you know, pretty sad outcome. And it, I, I don't think there needs to be much more justification than that. I'm sure the sheriff can speak to that in greater detail. Other items besides drugs do tend to at least attempt it to be smuggled into the facility. This particular scanner would pick that up as well. So I wouldn't suggest, you know, pretty strongly that you consider the alternative funding. I think we cannot get this installed soon enough. I think every day that goes by is just one more day that an opportunity for something like this to happen here and we'd like to prevent that.
I have a question. So last week I was really adamant about us looking into options because again, I, I feel like this is a great opportunity for our opioid funding. To pay for this.
Right.
And you said you were going to talk to a, a state agency that deals with this.
Yeah, and, and I absolutely intend to do that. I've been. Kind of busy with personal things.
Yeah, no, I know you've had some personal stuff. I just, again, I think we all agree that the sooner we can get the scanner in, the better. But I really think it's a great opportunity with that opioid funding to pay for. And I just don't understand why, obviously, I'm just not happy with what our decision is with, from our attorneys. And I'd like more confirmation on that, a clarification. Yet also I really think this needs to be a top priority. Again, with the example that happened at Chippewa county, you know.
But quote is good through September. So we, it's not like we need to make the decision right now. My, my concern is the longer we wait. I mean, it's just one more day. We don't have that total available. The bottom line is that, yeah, I really would like to follow up with the MAC person and talk through this. Just to see what, what other thoughts that there might be. Also, the idea that in, again, not. Having dove into the rules deep enough to be able to answer this, but maybe there's a possibility that we go ahead and purchase this with the other funds. And then as we do our research. You know, compensate those other funds with the opioid money if it turns out we can do it. But it starts to get a little complicated transferring money. So just soon do it with one shot if we can. But yeah, I would. Think that that would be a very good thing to do right now, just to follow up and see if there is any wiggle room there at all.
How much money, how much money do we have in the commissary fund right now, you know?
Off the top of my head, I don't. I do know that we budgeted a transfer of, I believe, two hundred twenty five thousand to the general fund. And that seemed to be a number that we would be able to do annually. So probably it's going to have a surplus of that. By the end of the year, which comes in three months for us. So there's quite a possibility that there would be.
So the commissary fund really could pay for the whole thing.
Very well might.
Is there any way we can talk to the agency that's in charge of this? Because I agree with Commissioner Wilson. I think the opioid money should help pay for this. This is a prime example.
Yeah, I, I absolutely don't disagree with you, as you know, but. I, I think though it's a, it's a caution that's been thrown up. I think we, we want to be absolutely certain. If we're going to commit those money, funding and everybody's comfortable with that. And that, that's what I want to get us to.
I don't doubt that in a few months will be, they'll come across and say that that'll be eligible.
I hope so.
Like, it's like ARPA. When ARPA was first out.
Yeah.
They didn't explain what we could buy with.
I understand.
And it was even worse with the townships because townships got the money through the state. The state wasn't told what they could buy. To use it for. The state couldn't tell the townships what they were used for. We got our money straight from the federal government. They did the same thing. They didn't tell us what we use it for. The elections that, that clerk's going through. As she explained, they've come out, throw this mandate out that you got to do this nine days of voting. They don't say how it gets paid for. They don't say they're going to chip in. They don't say how you're going to pay for it. If the township's going to pay for it. State, the state federal government works a lot slower. And I don't doubt this opioid money is the same way. They're gonna, they're getting inundated with calls from everybody else too. They're, all, all the counties are asking. You know, what, what can we spend it on? Can we use it for this? Can we use it for that? And they're, they probably got a panel of twenty people sitting up there scratching their heads. And everybody's got an agenda and, yeah. And it's just like that with every program comes down the pike. We wait a little bit, we'll find out that. We find out that, oh gee, we, we could use it for that. So.
Comment. And, and I agree, I agree a hundred percent with what you're saying, but yet also it's good to be aggressive and be very proactive on this. Well, because again, we have a lot of money sitting there. We now have a committee formed. We know the importance of this body scanner. So I just think more aggressive and proactive we can be right now on this, the better.
So how do you feel about? You know, because we have three, we have three items now. That were the top of that list. About the ARPA money. Was this scan, was this scanner was one of them, right?
It was.
All right. How much of the ARPA money would it take?
It depends. You know, do you want to split the cost of commissary? Do we want to? Wait for the opioid. Discussion to happen, which I suggest would be wise at this point. But really, potentially three, but at least two sources if you want to split it, or you can do all. Commissary, you can do all ARPA.
I'd like, I'd like to go for the, for the interpretation again on the opioid money. And the reason for that is. It just doesn't make any sense not to be able to use that. For that, for that jail. It doesn't, especially what happened, somebody dying. You know, and if they had caught it, may not have died. So that's around, I would like. Any, any comments from anybody else? I'd like to pursue that further. This opioid money, I think should be, be used for that.
I agree.
Especially under the circumstances of what happened. Okay. Okay, let's go to employment related testing and examination.
You have a copy of a resolution that was approved in twenty twenty one with at that time mid Michigan, on my Michigan occupational health. That was specific pricing for physicals, return to work, physicals, DOT, physicals and so on. I think this actually was initiated, this conversation initiated a transit with their need to do. DOT, physicals for our bus drivers and they apparently are not offered at by Michigan, if I'm understanding right. So the thought was we needed to revisit this agreement and maybe. Come up with another plan as to who we're going. uh, come up with another plan as to who we're gonna select to do these. I honestly, if any facility is doing a DOT physical, maybe you want to just buy blankets to say whoever provides that, well, that's, that's fine with us. But what I think this resolution really comes into its own is that when we have particularly our, our physicals, the pre-employment physicals, we want everybody to go to the same facility. The doctors there know when they're performing the physicals. They're doing them for the county. They know what the county's needs are. If we want to not work with somebody that does not also provide DOT physicals, we could do that too. I'm not really sure what direction you want to hit with that, but looking at the pricing on this, I don't know that we necessarily need to have a contract and what we're getting is the pricing that every business gets for those services. Uh, when it comes to something like a work comp physical, well, that's, that's a different story. And there you may want to assign a very specific location for that. In fact, probably our insurance carriers will tell us who they want to see. But that being said, just again, looking at these prices, the highest one that you see is a return to work physical at two hundred dollars. So that's well below any threshold that we have for receiving quotes or sealed bids for. So it's just then a matter of where, where do we prefer to send people? We have two operations in town between McLaren and My Michigan. They're all physicians, you know, performing this, so. I guess it's, it's up to you if you want to do something different than what we've been doing since, since twenty-one.
So this is what we're doing now, right? And that's my understanding.
One-stop shopping is the best.
I agree. Mr. Wilson?
I agree. I mean, us both being on the transit board, you know, we saw the issues there and we know the already the issues we have finding quality employees, you know, it's just one less road bump and we don't need that. So whatever we can do to get rid of that road bump better.
Um, no, like I say, one-stop shopping, return to work physical. You know, that, again, that, one doctor knows or a panel of doctors know our situation and what we need. Providing that we're giving them job descriptions for the different functions. So what about the law enforcement? Can we get that physical here in the county?
Pretty confident we can. I think the undersheriff handles that for the sheriff's office.
My Michigan currently will not perform medicals certification physical for us. Uh, when, when we first started, they were doing that. We told subsequently that they will not sign uncle's paperwork. And you not know about McLaren. Doesn't happen very often. These type of physicals are the ones where you're licensing a new hire coming out of an academy somewhere. Hopefully have to go through a more detailed physical mental examination and that type of stuff. So the last two licenses went to Covenant in Saginaw. Because I know that they do that on a regular basis. So it went to the six hundred building at Covenant. I would say, I did not check McLaren to see if they would. My Michigan told me correctly, they will no longer sign uncle's documents for us.
But they have doctors that can do it.
Whether they do or don't.
Do they do it, not do it here, just here, or the, do it Midland?
What I was told was because they were doing it for us up to a certain point and they said we're gonna no longer do that.
I just know that dealing with hospitals and clinics and this stuff. The billing just goes nuts when you, especially if you start doing two different ones and everything else. I'd, I'd urge that we check with McLaren locally and see if they'll do all this stuff too. Are, we're not under contract right now with My Michigan.
You've adopted this resolution that says that's where we're sending people.
Right, no contract.
But there's, right, we're subject to their pricing and, and everything. We just made it our policy to go there.
Okay.
Latest update on My Michigan as far as new hire for county employees. They were only doing the physicals Tuesdays and Fridays because recently it's now a longer basis Monday and Friday. That's just a recent change.
Oh, okay.
They, do they do the physicals that are required for the sheriff's department or no?
Not the licensing. So if I have, we have a new hire that's already licensed. Yes, they'll do the pre-hire physical for the county.
Okay.
Saying that all county employees, both the problem that we have at the sheriff's office is if we're hiring somebody fresh out of the academy. My mission is to be able to do this time.
We might as well leave the uncle's where they are right now. I mean, it's working with no sense in breaking, going, doing away with something that works.
Well, why don't we check to see if McLaren will do it in, in town?
I can do that. That's, I can check with McLaren.
Because if they'll do everything and it's in town.
I understand what you're saying.
And I would sign a contract with them if they, if they'd agree to one, then we got set pricing.
The undersheriff will check on that. Would you bring it back to us next meeting? I would appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Annual flu vaccine clinic.
We have the boilerplate contract that is sent to us by Rite Aid. We, we've been, and I already talking about the flu season next year. For the last two years, we've conducted flu shock clinics right here, actually in this room. For employees who are interested. So what happens is Rite Aid will come in with the vaccine. Our employees would sign up. They would receive their vaccination and, you know, it's pretty simple. And it's literally fifteen minutes out of somebody's day to take care of that. What Rite Aid has asked is that we enter into an agreement to do that for this year. I was just looking for the date. It is in October. But unfortunately, it didn't land on my calendar yet. It's exactly what date it is, but I remember it's mid-October. And we would set it up, set up the day. They provide everything, literally. We just simply have to preserve the room. Uh, we do have an obligation to pay a fee if we have fewer than twenty employees sign up and go through. Uh, that's not been an issue the last two years, but we do have some part-time employees who come through who are not insured. And so if we have that case, they do bill us rather than the, well, there's no one else to bill. Uh, so they would bill lots for that. And I think we ended up paying just somewhere around, you know, just a couple of hundred dollars is all to do this. But the convenience of having that available to the employees, I think does go an awful long way and I'd like to see us continue that.
Question. Is this something that we've been doing last few years and signing this contract?
Right, since I've been here. There was, uh, the first year I was here, we didn't, but then I don't think anybody was doing anything with COVID. But the last two years we've done it. And again, it's been fairly successful. I think we actually have more last year than we had the year before. So we're kind of counting on that.
How many employees do we usually have sign up for that?
At least twenty.
Okay.
That's our minimum threshold. And if we don't, they'll charge us sixty dollars for everyone under twenty.
Sixty dollars for a flu shot?
They're bringing the vaccine here. So I, I don't I'm no expert in it, but I assume they can. Once they've left wherever with the vaccine, that's it. There's a commitment. I don't know.
Okay. Mr. Scott?
Yeah.
Any comment?
All in favor of it.
Mr. Mayhew? I cut you off, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. Who resource officer statistics?
I had hoped to have a, a, a better breakdown. I showed you that graph a couple of meetings ago about overtime. And the question was, where was the overtime earned? And frankly, my schedule just hasn't allowed me to get with the undersheriff. He had to get the details broken out. I'm sure that he has them, but that's, that's the statistic that you wanted to see. Uh, there's no action you need to take, but I think it's going to be very good information for you to have as we go through the budgeting.
Okay.
Well, I think we need to like I said before, before the school year starts, we need to have an understanding with the with the schools involved and how many hours that they want us to work. Because if we're gonna spend all the money that they're giving us in, in nine months. Then then the county, county taxpayer takes over for the other three months.
Right.
Then you, then you look at whether or not to seasonally have a seasonal layoff.
Right, so our contract is, makes the math very easy for us. We're contracted to do eight hours per day when school is open. So that's our foundation working forward. If there's anything over and above that, there needs to be an agreement in the school and the county for that over, those overtime hours. Uh, so that's, I think, a very reasonable and I think, uh, very doable task is that we do sit down with the schools, myself, the sheriff and the superintendent of the schools, just to go over those, that understanding. I have been able to access the school calendar for Ogumah Heights for the coming year, so we know where vacations are. We know where in-service days are. We know what the holidays are and so on and can do our calculations accordingly. Uh, and then I think we can do a much better job just in terms of where the special duty assignments occur so that we don't incur overtime. I think there's a lot we can do there, but I think the first step is to meet with the schools and to understand that if they do have obligations that they want our officer to attend like a football game or something, let's know that now and we can if it's gonna cause overtime, budget for that too. And then we're all on the same page.
Or we all understand what flex time is.
Right.
I don't like flex time, but I know what it is. Um, will you be getting the, those days from, uh, like what am I for us got? Because we do.
That's the plan. I didn't see one published yet.
Okay.
But.
All right, so then we'll know more.
It's probably pretty similar. The in-service days are the ones that I think are gonna jump around, but with the holiday breaks, things like that are.
Yeah, that's true. Okay. So more to come on that later. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, August twenty-fourth, regular meeting.
Now you got a declaration of conflicts.
Oh, I missed. Okay, declaration of conflicts of interest and voting responsibility.
After our last meeting, the county attorney sent me an email about, um, um, a process for abstaining from voting. Um, his concern was that under our own rules, um, every commissioner present shall vote on a question. Uh, unless, um, there's been a declared conflict. Now, how do we go about doing this? I think our standards of conduct policy that we adopted this year really helps. In that situation for the first time since I've been here where we had a commissioner say, I have a conflict with this. I can't vote on it. And that was the right thing to do, to declare that. So what I'd like to do is just change your agenda format a little bit. Uh, after the agenda is approved, add an item that says declaration of conflicts. And then if any commissioner has a conflict on any issue that's on the agenda, that's the point to declare it. I have a conflict because, fill in the blank. And then the board votes whether or not that conflict will excuse you from voting at that point. Then we, we're all, uh, again, operating above board. Everybody understands. Now, as I've worked with prior employers, the way this works is commissioners begin to maybe think very deeply about, okay, this person is a neighbor. Um, you know, this requesting a zoning change or something, so I think I have a conflict. Well, this is, would be the opportunity to declare that. And then if your colleagues say, well, it's not really a conflict because you have no direct financial interest or you have no direct family interest or something like that, then your conscience is clear and you vote. But otherwise, everybody has to vote on, on every issue. Uh, and so I did promise I would bring that up. But I think that would be the simplest way for us to do that, just simply adding that line on the agenda, declaration of conflicts. That majority of your meetings, there will be none and we move on. It'll be just that quick. But if there is one, or if you even think there's an inkling of one, that's an opportunity to jump in and say, this is what I'm thinking.
Makes sense to me. I'm good. Okay. Let's go to the let's go to August twenty-fourth, regular meeting.
The question was posed because that's a fair week, uh, maybe postponing that meeting by one week to the thirty-first, I think it is. Uh, of August. And then if we're gonna have the thought, was we do it now and give everybody plenty of notice?
Oh, look at that. We have five Thursdays.
Convenient.
You know, I brought that up. I'd be more apt to meet in the morning. And not take up that last week.
You're talking about the, the twenty-fourth, meet in the morning?
Yeah.
I think that's
Animal Marchant's in the morning?
Yeah.
Is it?
They said there was a conflict. I don't remember it was the morning, but there was something.
It's an evening meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. So why don't we just switch it to thirty-first?
Okay.
Any problem? Any problem? Mr. Mayhew? Any problem?
No, I don't have a problem.
Any problem?
Thanks for asking my input. No problem.
You're, you're the one that's using that, not me. And I don't plan on using it either. Craig?
Yeah, no problem.
Mr. Wilson?
I have no problem.
Okay, let's do it, uh, on the thirty-first instead of twenty-fourth. Same time, five thirty?
Yes, yes.
Okay. The cow be on the seventeenth? Okay, do we need a motion for that?
I'll bring a resolution on Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any public comment on anything you'd like to talk about? Any comment in the audience and, um?
I, I have a public comment. Oh, okay, go ahead. Okay, that's good. Okay.
Public comment? I don't hear anything. It's just.
Hmm, they're not talking. I'm gonna talk.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Rec Gildner Ogumah County Clerk. I would just like to publicly say how much work you have done for the treasurer's office. It does not go unnoticed and I think if everybody did their own research and they would find that you are doing a satisfactory job. Thank you for doing that for our county.
Dead on the record. Well, okay. Any more public comments? Okay, I guess we go into closed session for consideration of a written legal opinion. What do we read for that?
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session. Uh, according to MCL fifteen two point two six eight H for consideration of a legal opinion.
I'll second.
On favor?
I think it's a roll call, isn't it? It is.
Okay, roll call. Thank you for giving me straight today. I appreciate it.
Craig's that?
Yes.
Run the sentence.
Yes.
Charles Wilson.
Yes.
Robert Jermaehu.
He said yes. So, close. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Me want to, Sheriff, another sheriff to stay as long.
It'd be good.
So how do we get off that thing? We gotta, we gotta get off.
Thanks, Chris.
That thing.
Thanks, Chris.
Who's that?
Oh. I guess do we have to do it again? I'll, I'll make a motion to go into open session.
I'll second.
Um, we changed the wrong meeting date. The fair is the week of the fifteenth through the nineteenth.
I, I still, I still make a motion to, oh, we go into open session.
Okay.
Zoom is back on.
Okay.
So all in favor, you got it.
Aye, okay.
Aye.
So we amend the, uh, the motion about having our meeting on August.
We didn't make a motion. We didn't make a motion, we just changed the meeting.
Okay. And when did you say it was?
It's this day is the fair.
Okay.
Seventeenth.
Yeah.
So can we change the cow meeting then from the seventeenth to the twenty-fourth?
We can back up those last two meetings by one week. So, you know, instead of having the, whatever is the tenth? Instead of that date, we'll do the cow on the seventh.
No.
No, 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 no.
Seventeenth.
Now on the seventeen-fourth, we'll do twenty-fourth, thirtieth.
Right.
Okay, say that one more time.
Erase that. Well, no, leave that. Cow, five thirty.
Yeah.
Yes, you're good.
That's what I said.
Good.
I guess I spoke too fast. All right, so our, the, the cow, the second, the second cow is gonna be on the twenty-fourth of August.
Yes.
At five thirty.
Yes.
Okay. And you will close that, Tim?
Um, I'll have a resolution for you, but then you make it official and we will post it immediately.
Thank you.
They make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yep.
It's like that. Oh, Mayhew didn't, Mayhew beat you on that one. Okay.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any adjournments?